Why don't we call this work session to order? We'll do a couple really quick ones. And then I know we have our incoming Chief Administrative Officer. And then we also have our County Executive here. So, two quick and easy ones. If the Council could turn to Page Two, which is a contract of sale. And if I could call up Amy Crossy. Is Amy here? And that's on Page Two. That's a quick and easy one. And Amy, I think it was your birthday yesterday? So, happy birthday as well. Good to see you. That's why we're letting you go first, Amy. Let's see, Amy Crossy. Page. Let me see here. What page is that, Mr. Secretary? Page thirteen. Okay. Yeah, Page thirteen. Thank you, Councilwoman Bevins. And good afternoon.
Good afternoon and thank you for your birthday wishes. It is a rare treat indeed to be first on your agenda to work with us. I'm usually at the bottom of the list.
Oh, I know you are. I told Tom that it's your birthday, so we're putting you first.
Bump me to the top? Wow. Almost makes being another year older worthwhile. The administration is requesting approval of a contract to acquire an easement across approximately 0.84 acres for the appraised value of $18,510 in a garden apartment community known as Northbrook Limited Partnership Property along the East Branch Herring Run Relief Sewer Project. It is for a permanent drainage and utility easement along this very long relief sewer project. There are 25 properties in this project and five of them require council approval.
Great. Any questions or comments for Ms. Crossy? Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you. I'm sure this is one of many. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nice and easy. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Now, if we could call up real quickly Dr. Gregory Branch. Dr. Br- oh, okay. There we go. And that's Page Eight, Councilmembers. We're going to do Fiscal Matter One, Page Eight.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. Fiscal Matter One is a request to approve a contract with Prolog Incorporated to provide targeted case management services for qualified adults with serious mental health disorders living in the county. The contract commences upon council approval, continues through June 30th, 2019, and will automatically renew for three additional one-year periods. There are no costs to the county for this contract as this contractor will build the Maryland Public Behavioral Health System directly. Our Behavioral Health Bureau is the core service agency for mental health in the county, and that means that we are responsible for planning, managing, and monitoring of all publicly funded mental health services at the local level.
Any questions or comments from the Council? Alrighty, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Alright, and now why don't we call up our Stacy Rogers? And we did all have a chance to meet with Ms. Rogers and have individual conversations as well, but we do appreciate you coming back up. And the floor is yours. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good afternoon to the Council. Mr. President, to those in the audience. I'm just, again, indeed honored to be here today, but also to be considered for this position. As I shared during the press conference and during our time together, I've spent most of my adult life, literally, in Baltimore County, coming here to Baltimore County to attend UMBC in my early twenties and residing in the county. Raised my son here in the county, and I'm helping to raise my two beloved grandchildren here in the county. So, for me to have the opportunity to take all of my skills and experiences at every level of government, I've had the opportunity to work, to bring them home to Baltimore County, to help the Council and also work hand in hand with our County Executive and senior leadership team is an honor. And I believe that I'm prepared for the job. I'm extremely excited about the job and look forward to working with you.
Wonderful. Well, we definitely appreciate you being here. We definitely appreciate your time. Also, I knew many conversations with each of us and both had good conversations together as well. Do any of the Councilmembers have any questions or comments for the appointment of Stacy Rogers as the County Administrative Officer? Councilman Izzy Patoka?
I just want to point out that Ms. Rogers hails from the beautiful Second District of Baltimore County. She's one of our finest. And look forward to working with you.
I know we had lots of questions, a lot of good dialogue already with Ms. Rogers. Anybody else have anything that you wanted to add or publicly state?
I too would like to add that we look forward to working with you. We come clearly, highly qualified for the position, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Councilman Marks?
Thank you. One thing that we share is we've both worked at the federal, state, and local levels. And I wish you the best. I think you'll find that this level of government is among the most satisfying, where you will see tangible results. And I think we're going to do a great job, and good luck.
Thank you, Councilwoman Marks.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Bevins?
I just want to say I really look forward to working with you, and I thank the County Executive for doing such a wonderful search and bringing you to Baltimore County. And I look forward to working with you. I also appreciate being a female in this position. Is this the first time, County Executive? Yes. So, I'm really excited about that, as you can see. I'm outnumbered up here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bevins. And I know that we share our coal miner's daughter.
That's true. That's true.
Spirit.
And Mr. Patoka, I think she has some family in my district, so we can talk about that later.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Rogers? Well, I would just say we did really enjoy talking to you recently as a Council and hearing a lot of your thoughts and ideas. And I really respected a lot of your answers and kind of how you think about things, and especially on the processes and the analysis that I really got a lot from our last conversation. So, we appreciate you coming in and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Alrighty. And moving right along, we will now call up our County Executive. County Executive Johnny Olszewski. And our County Executive is going to talk about all three bills, Bills Three-19, Four-19, and Five-19. Afterward, he's going to answer any questions that we have. And then, once our County Executive is done, then we'll go into each bill individually because we have some public speakers on each bill as well. So, good afternoon. Great to see you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Good to see you and members of the Council. It's great to be back. Before you, I want to thank you for just the great questions you all had and the time you've spent with Stacy. We are so excited to have her be part of the team and come on board. So, thank you for, you know, doing your due diligence in this process. And we're excited to welcome her for her integrity and her ethics and her commitment to transparency. It's in that spirit before you today on a package of reform legislation. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. As you know, taxpayers place a great deal of trust and confidence in our local government, and they expect us to be held to the highest standards. But we've missed a few opportunities to do even more in those areas. Following the announcement of the package before you today, The Baltimore Sun wrote that no one has ever accused Baltimore County of being way ahead in the good government or open government curve. Like you, though, I'm excited about working together to change that. And I'm excited about what these bills aim to do in terms of moving us in that direction. So, first, I have before you Bill Three-19, which is a charter amendment to establish a public financing system, the Citizens' Election Fund. The purpose of this bill is to reduce the influence of money and special interests in our elections. Similar to what our counterparts elsewhere in the state have done, this will create a voluntary system for candidates to opt in to receive matching funds for eligible campaign contributions. Now, this is not meant to be a giveaway for any other candidate for office. And while program details are not yet contemplated in this charter amendment, similar programs elsewhere offer small-dollar matching funds for candidates that qualify by showing real and authentic community support. But because this is a charter amendment, we are empowering voters to decide on the proposal in 2020. I know there have been some concerns expressed about whether this should be a priority of our residents. I think that's precisely the reason to give them the ability. Approving this charter amendment gives voters a direct opportunity to vote the proposal up or down. It's the only real way to get the pulse of our communities on this issue. I know there have been other questions about the costs associated with the proposal. Again, a critical reason why we propose sending this measure directly to voters for their approval, allowing them to decide for themselves whether this is a priority worth investing in. Now, for context, we're talking about, we estimate potentially about a four-million-dollar expenditure once every four years in the context of what would be 12-plus billion dollars of overall spending in that same period of time. And I trust the voters to make that decision if that is a priority for them. If they do approve the charter amendment, it invigils a public engagement process in the form of a commission to help decide the facets of the program, which would be done, obviously, in close collaboration with the Council. After that process, the program allows plenty of time for a thoughtful and measured approach to develop the program and to fund the program to start in 2026. I'll just close by saying, on this bill, public financing was used successfully at the state level, with Governor Hogan crediting it for his successful win in 2014. It's also been used successfully this last election cycle in Montgomery County, with Howard County and Baltimore City already planning to come on board as well. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll move on to the next bill. Bill Four-19 proposes a series of changes to the rules related to lobbyists. Under current law, former county employees are prohibited from lobbying on matters in which they participated significantly. But I believe that high-level officials from the executive branch are not generally prohibited from lobbying the government immediately following the end of their employment, which is the practice in many other places. I think it's time for Baltimore County to close this loophole on our revolving door for the executive branch. So, I'm proposing a restriction on county lobbying by a former county administrative officer or department head for a period of one year after their employment ends. This provision would mirror the standards already in place for the legislative branch. So, we're just seeking to apply the same standards to the executive branch as to the legislative branch. In addition, the current definitions and standards for lobbyists and who lobbies the executive branch is different. For one who lobbies the legislative branch, the proposal seeks to create a single, uniform standard. And finally, we believe that county residents deserve to know who is lobbying their government, not having to jump through hoops to access that information. So, we would require that all lobbyist registrations be posted online, the existing lobbying registrations. Lastly, Bill Five-19 creates an Office of Ethics and Accountability to provide increased oversight of county government by working to identify any waste, fraud, abuse, or illegal acts in county government. Now, this office was intentionally meant to be independent from both the County Executive and the County Council, providing with necessary autonomy to effectively root out problems. The office will be led by an executive director that will serve in inspector-like capacity. Expect- sorry, inspector general-like capacity. And will be appointed by the executive and approved by the Council for up to two staggered terms so that the terms do not coincide with the Council and the executive terms. The director could be removed for cause by the Council with a majority plus one vote. The leadership and management of the Ethics Commission, currently housed under the Law Department, would fall under this new office, further decreasing the potential for interference and increasing autonomy overall. The new office would be charged with issuing public reports and making council recommendations to the executive and the council for efficiency, accountability, and integrity in county government. The work of this office will complement our outstanding county auditing team and the great work that they do. Mr. Chairman, members of the Council, I believe these three proposals represent important steps forward towards a government that's more accountable to the people we serve. And I look forward to working with you to enact these measures to set Baltimore County forward on a path towards that accountable government. Thankful for Kimmy Routson, for my staff, along with our County Attorney, Mike Field, and Director of Budget and Finance, Keith Dorsey, here to answer any specific questions that I might not be able to.
Questions or comments from the Council to the County Executive on Bill Three-19, Four-19, or Five-19?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Catch?
Yes, Mr. County Executive would. I see that the first bill, Nineteen, has these elections starting in 2026. Is there any reason why we can't give the county the option for 2024 but then require it in 2026 if we didn't do it in 2024?
Yeah, so, the way we structured it, Councilman, we wanted to just make sure that we had plenty of time built in, that there was time for this to go before the voters, for the commission to craft and to work with the Council on the details. If the Council decided. It also gives us more time to fund it, a longer time to build up the fund, but...
Oh, I'm sorry, but I'll add to that in a second.
In terms of actually being able to do it, I believe the Council could if they wanted to, but if...
Well, remember that this is only, the way the bill is drafted, only for county council and executives. So, we're going to have, the next election will be 2022, and the one after that will be 2026. So, and so, any bill that we do will be key to the election cycles, probably, which, as you know, begin after the four-year, after the latest gubernatorial election. So, I think when I was discussing it with the executive, we were talking about how it really needed, because of the way the election cycle works, you really couldn't put it into effect in any serious way until the 2026 election cycle.
Well, you, of course, I don't know if the intention is for primaries and generals. I don't know. But if it were for generals, it would be pretty easy, I would think. But, no, all I'm saying is that should, for some reason, somebody really want to do this and wants to do it for that election, this bill would prohibit it.
For which election?
Two-two.
But there won't, oh, you're right. But the problem, I mean, I think the idea was because of the 2020, we're actually under, state law, we're already in the middle of the 2022 election cycle, right? So, there's a, there's a definite, yeah. State law provides, there's a definition of the election cycle in the election article that just talks about it being from immediately after the gubernatorial election, which we just had, for those four years. And so, it would have been a little bit awkward, I think.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
To sort of do this...
In the...
Because, remember, this isn't going to be passed by the voters, if it does, until 2020.
And I, the only reason I said that is because, you know, we're up for reelection in 2022, so we don't have to abide by this because it's not going to exist until 2026. So, I didn't want this to appear to be an effort to try to bypass 2022. But you're absolutely right. We are in the primary election cycle for 2022 now. And any money collected goes in that cycle. So, we're in it right now.
Right, and we can't even, I'm sorry.
I would just add that it's consistent with at least the experiences we've seen to date as these systems have been created in other local jurisdictions. It's typically after, the cycle, the next gubernatorial cycle after the election fund was created. So, we just meant to be consistent with what we've seen elsewhere, but certainly happy to work with the Council if they have different prerogatives or priorities. If we can do it in accordance with the law, of course.
Thank you.
Councilman Marks?
Yeah, Mr. County Executive, thank you for coming. And I think you addressed the point, which is we're simply giving the voters the chance to decide whether they want this or not. I kind of share Councilman Catch's questions as well. You know, we redistrict in the summer of 2021 for the 2022 election. So, our campaigns are short. I mean, it's not like we're running for president. We have short campaigns. So, if there's any way to make this in effect for 2022, I would certainly support it as well.
Have to remember also that this is just enabling legislation. We'll still have to draft a bill and introduce a bill.
Correct, I know. All we're doing is getting this on the ballot.
Right. So, I mean, I just think, you know, and, I mean, I've looked at some of the laws in the other jurisdictions, and they're complex. So, we can't even really introduce a bill until after December, you know, three of 2020. So, that's the earliest we could ever do a bill. So, because remember, the way charter amendments work is when we voted on November three, it goes into effect 30 days later. So, I don't see us introducing a bill until sometime in January 2021, if not even after that. So, it would be, I just think it would be, this isn't, you know, just the practicalities. And remember that, I don't know when the primary is. You'll recall that a few years ago, we had a really early primary, and they keep moving it around. So, to put it into effect for 2022, I think would have been a very sort of difficult thing, but, you know.
But all we're doing is empowering the citizens to decide whether we want to go down this road.
Right, and but then, and if it gets approved, then we've got to draft a bill.
Councilman Crandall?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. County Executive, thank you for coming. I think that, you know, obviously, these bills are important to you. We're not used to having the County Executive come to us on administration bills. So, I voiced some concerns of mine to your staff who have been really good at communicating this, and we've been talking for the last couple of weeks on it. Some concerns I have with Three-Nineteen, and I voiced this to your staff. It's incomplete. What we're asking the voters to vote on is on a concept. But because the bill doesn't detail any system, it's kind of like we're in a situation where, well, let's just pass this and get it to the voters, and then we'll figure it out later. It's all, it strikes me as a little Pelosiism. Let's pass it so we can see what's in it. So, I just have a, it has nothing to do with party, Councilwoman. I'm just, you know, it's what the woman said. So, because of this lack of detail, we don't know if this is a matching fund system or some other system. If you want to participate in a federal election in funding presidential campaigns, you check a box on your tax return. Same thing with, I believe, with your tax return that goes into the state. You check a box that you want to participate. I'm not sure if we have a box to participate on the Baltimore County level. So, these are just sort of questions and concerns that we're sending out to referendum without really knowing the details of how the system would necessarily work. So, I think that, in my opinion, I think the bill is premature. And that's not a question, but a comment. So, I, you know, if you want to respond to my comment.
Sure. I obviously respect your opinion and your work very much, Councilman. I think the analogy is flipped, though. We're not asking you to pass a bill that's already decided, sight unseen, and then telling people what it is. We're asking people if, in concept, they support the idea of a public finance system. That's the whole point of it, of doing it this way is because if the public doesn't support it, there's little use in coming up and developing an entire system to have them, to have, you know, if they don't support the concept, there's no point in having an actual program developed. And part of, again, I think to the earlier questions from Councilmen Catch and Marks about the extended timeline is that's, again, the reason to have that opportunity to work with the Council in collaboration with your constituents in terms of developing a system that people actually can support and get behind if the voters were clear in their intent in terms of whether to have it or not. But I think in terms of the intent of the charter amendment, and I think in terms of what it would do, if it gets your vote, Councilman, we're also happy to put forward a specific proposal that could be considered post-voter approval. But I think the general workings of these systems are pretty consistent at the state level and the local levels where they're implemented. We'd imagine doing something similar, but learning from those lessons along the way as well.
Councilwoman Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would like to thank the County Executive for presenting these bills in person. They obviously must be very important to you to be here in person. I applaud the County Executive's commitment to transparency with the recent town hall meetings, the community town hall meetings, and the public safety town halls. You can actually feel the difference in the community by you doing that. So, I greatly appreciate it. People should expect accountability, ethical, and transparent government. Over the years, the Council themselves have enacted legislation to livestream our council meetings, ban campaign contributions during the CZMP process, and require lobbyists who lobby the Council to post that online as well. The bills proposed by you are important and should be taken seriously and considered carefully. The County Council is not a rubber stamp for the administration, but rather an equal branch of government. The Council should approach these bills, as they do with any other, carefully and deliberately, to make sure that we get the bills right. I look forward to having a dialogue today on these bills and how Baltimore County government can best serve the people who put us here to begin with, and the residents of Baltimore County.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilman Jones?
Yes, I too share my colleagues' pleasure that you have taken the time to really invest heavily in opening up the government and being transparent and doing all the things that we all agree that are important. that we all agree that are important to an open and successful government. I guess, it was interesting, I was, I heard you bring up Governor Hogan, how he used public funding, and that was good for Governor Hogan, and Governor Hogan got elected. But then, when it came time for the next election, Governor Hogan, I'm looking at one of the many articles that The Sun reported, Maryland Governor Hogan Raises More Than $2 Million in Two Months, Maintaining His Cash Dominance in the Race, and it goes on to say how he raised significantly more than Martin O'Malley or anyone else. And so I'm just wondering, so if the public paid to help him get elected, and then he went on and collected more money from anyone else than anyone else, how does that benefit the citizens?
First of all, Councilman, thank you for the kind words, I want to echo, I've really appreciated the relationship that we've had with this council, I really appreciate the ways that you've opened up your districts individually to me, and I, I look forward to continuing the relationship. I would suggest that, in my opinion, the, the question actually proves the point. We have a governor who was elected in one cycle with public financing against a much, much, much better financed candidate in Anthony Brown, and then in a different election cycle, he had the option, and he chose to not use the, the private financing. And so in the same way, we had council candidates in Montgomery County, who, some of whom were elected using the public option, others who were elected using traditional fundraising methods. The county executive of Montgomery County was elected with a public option, he may or may not choose to use that next time, but the point is to actually have the option so that we can, we can, we can have those different approaches in electing our leaders, and that more people have access to the ballot and the opportunity to serve in public office.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, I guess the other, the other issue for me, I, I have a philosophical issue with taxpayer dollars funding campaigns. So you bring up Montgomery County, who spent $3.2 million on their primary for people running for office. They funded 20 candidates, four of them won, three of them had help from outside PACs, who also, not in collaboration with them, but certainly ran ads and what have you for them. And I guess I look back at Baltimore County, and I look at our financial condition, and I, I have a long list in front of me of the needs that my community have been asking for, for over the last five years, and as you know, there's very limited funds, there, there's a point when we don't have any more money to do the things we want to do. So I guess my question is, having seen you in the campaign and knowing your heart and knowing your priorities, I'm just curious, you think that this is a higher priority and a better use of taxpayer funds than universal pre-K or sending kids to college at no expense? I mean, the list can go on and on and on, because at some point, if we earmark $4 million for this, somewhere, whether it be a road, whether it be a school, computer, somewhere we're going to stop short and say we're out of money, yet $4 million will be earmarked for this.
Couple of things, unfortunately, if anyone has learned the hard way how limited things are, it's been this executive, so welcome to the job, right? You know, I, I would say that elections and governing are about priorities, and I was clear in my campaign that this was one of my priorities, and I think the response and the vote totals reflected support for those platforms that included making government more open, accessible, and transparent, and this is a key part of that, that campaign pledge. In addition to finding ways to expand early childhood education, in addition to making community college more accessible, I, I get that there are trade-offs, but that's, that's the hard work of governing, right? And I think that we're asked to prioritize investments every day in this work, whether it's economic development, opportunities, or anchor institutions, or what we spend on arts and culture or tourism, I mean, these are all competing interests that we have to prioritize against each other. What I love about the way this is structured is we are, we are being upfront with the public about the likely cost of a program, and allowing them to say whether or not this should be a priority, and whether or not this is something we should fund.
And this, I'll yield to my colleagues, give you all the opportunity if you want. So I thought about this real hard, and I thought, you know, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, maybe I, maybe I don't get it. So I should put this Facebook post, as I was riding down to the march yesterday where you and I were in Indianapolis, asking for additional school funding, and I'm riding down the road, and I'm thinking about this, so I, so I went on and put a quick post up on Facebook, and I asked people to send me an email or reply there. And I just got back from my staff, we received 86 Facebook replies, not counting your many rebuttals, Dan, we received 86 Facebook replies, five said yes, they support it, and 81 said no. Then when I look at my emails, we received 120 emails from yesterday to now, two said yes, 118 said no. So to me, you know, and you can argue whether or not I phrased it right, or whether or not I gave all the details, but at the end of the day, the question was, should we spend public funds for campaigns on individuals, or should we spend public funds on schools, roads, police, fire, the traditional things? And from what I can see, the public overwhelmingly supports spending that money on these items versus campaigns.
Well, I would say, first of all, I commend your engagement with your constituents, and, and while I may have described it differently in, in what the program it is and how it's structured, and also would have added that there is a backstop to the legislation that says if there are economic reasons why we can't fund it, there is actually a mechanism through which we could pull that money back out for other priorities if we are really in crisis. That's contemplated in the legislation as well. But even 200 or 300 responses on a social media platform or via email is, is just a drop in the bucket compared to the hundreds of thousands of people that we represent, or, or in my case, the nearly million, 850,000 people. And so I think, again, just if we're trying to get a true sense of where people are, the best way to absolutely do that is, is to let the people decide and put it on the ballot for them. And it, and if, and in fact, Councilman, if your constituents and other, the constituents of other council members felt that way, they would say no on the ballot, and the issue would be resolved.
A quick question, Mr. Executive, is, is there a mechanism that could give, say, a taxpayer a choice, like a voluntary choice, whether they wanted to have a certain amount of money designated for this, or would this be mandatory?
I mean, I would be more than happy if this passes in 2020 to work with the council to find methods of voluntarily funding the program, in part or in whole. As, as Councilman, I believe Crandall pointed out, I think that that's how it works at the, the state, and so we could explore if there are ways to make it work locally. But I would say that there are probably any number of people who would say that they, that they don't support things that we spend our taxpayer dollars on, and there are lots of people who do. So for, for all the people who believe in our efforts collectively to invest more in our schools and, and hire more teachers and pay them a better salary, there are some residents out there who think that I don't send my kids to school, so I shouldn't have to pay for it. I mean, it's, it's a public good, and I think investing in a strong democracy is also a public good. But, but that being said, we'd love to work with you and be open to working with you to find other ways to help fund it.
And I, I just take it on a referendum standpoint, you know, we're asking the question, do you support this from a voluntary basis, like with federal elections, everything else, you can check off a box, and, or if you support it from a taxpayer perspective, I, I'm not sure if the answers would change much, but I'd be, be curious. Other questions, Councilman Katch?
Yeah, thank you. With the people, a voluntary program, if this passes, I don't see any reason why in, in 20, what, the summer of 2021, we couldn't put something on, of all things, the property tax bill, but, you know, a contribution, a choice, might be something that we'd, Kim in, and I talked about that the other day. And this next question is really for Mike, but I, I do think you still need to hear it. In the bill, what is it, what, what doesn't give, I think it's this, five, no, 419, and it's on page, this is a new computer, I've never.
Page 419, page three?
Page, no, no, I'm sorry, page 11, I believe.
You're talking about 419, go 4-19?
It's on page three.
My, it, I thought this was touchscreen. Well, anyhow, Mike, in the ethics bill.
Okay.
It, the bill talks about who needs to file as a lobbyist, and we've had this discussion before, if someone is compensated $500 or more, they have to file. But the other provision is the one that concerns me when I think of community associations in Baltimore County who are very active and engaged, and you can't find, find it.
Well, I mean, just so you understand, this is what, what I did for this one, because I was tired of trying to make it up, was this is actually a, what, the, the state Ethics Commission actually issues a model law, they issued two model laws, actually, one for large jurisdictions, which we are one, and one for small jurisdictions, and I decided just to try to clarify this by copying almost verbatim the model law that was proposed by the state. We're not required to use the state's model law, but you know that if you use their model law, because remember, every time we pass a change of the ethics law, we have to get it approved by the State Ethics Commission, so for this one, because, you know, you always, when you come to the training, you hear me talking about this and sort of struggling with it, so, and I think what I said at the last time at the training was, I'm just going to stop this, and I'm just going to, you know, propose that we adopt the model that the state suggests that the larger jurisdictions have, and so this is, and it's in Comer, actually, so this is almost a verbatim copy of the state's model law.
But, but you know my question.
But I do, yes, and I do think that there's a fairly good chance that it will catch up some of the community associations that spend this kind of money to lobby, and I'm not, you know, I mean, on the one hand, I don't want to stifle, you know, engagement, on the other hand, it's probably not a bad thing to, to know also, you know, on both sides of whatever issue, who's lobbying it, so, but this, you know, but like I said, my real goal was just to sort of clarify things by adopting, you know, what the state was proposing.
What I, and what this refers to is that if a community association, let's say, communicates with an elected official, and that community association has spent over $100, they have to register as, as a lobbyist.
They may have to, yes.
Yeah, and, and my question was, I had, I think it was Sparks Glenco Community Association, during the last CZMP process, they spent, I think, about $400 printing a, a, seven copies of a book that they put together.
Well, remember that there's a special, but there are special provisions for the CZMP, and the only circumstance under which they would have to register as a lobbyist with us is if they had bought meals for you or something like that, otherwise, under the CZMP, everybody who does anything like that has to register with the secretary to the county council. That's not changing in this bill.
So, so, but, so if they spend over $100, they have to?
No, what, what the law provides, which we didn't change, was, we kept in there, I just saw it, because I was looking at it again today.
You're looking for the language?
No, I'm looking for the language about the CZMP, because we kept, okay, what it says is, and this is current law, I just changed one thing because it said rezoning, so it says, "A person who engages in lobbying, including making appearances for the purpose of influencing the comprehensive," it used to say rezoning, but I'm proposing that it's a zoning map process, because that's the actual name of the process, the comprehensive zoning map process, and it kills me that all these years took me to finally make this change, "is not required to filing a lobbying, file a lobbying registration, provided the person does not spend, expend money on a public official for meals, beverages, special events, or gifts, and registers with the secretary to the county council not later than five days after the last lobbying activity." That's current law, and it's not changing under this bill. So when they do that for the CZMP, and they, they have a pretty well set up system for doing that, so that, the people that you're talking about, nothing will change under the bill, they would still probably should have registered with the, with the.
Okay, what if a community association spends over $100 a year sending a newsletter, and in the newsletter it says, please contact your state senator, your delegates, your council member regarding whatever issue, but they spent over $100 on this newsletter?
Right, so that, and again, this is a slight change from, most of what I'm going to read to you is current law, but it's been changed a little just because the way, it sounds better. So the new definition will be lobbying means communicating in the presence of a public official of the legislative or executive branch of county government for the purpose of influencing legislative action, or, and this, what I'm about to read was always in the law, engaging in activities with the express purpose of soliciting others to communicate with a public official of the legislative or executive branch of the county government for the purpose of influencing legislative or executive action. This has always been there, it was just, it was, I, I had sort of ordered it poorly, like in a bill that we did two or three years ago, but that language that I just read to you, it used to say lobbying includes engaging in activities with the express purpose of soliciting others to communicate with a public official of the legislative or executive branch. I just, so it's kind of quick in order, it's always been there, though.
The answer to my question is yes.
Yes, it probably is, but that's not new, I just, the way I had written it a couple of years ago made it more.
I mean, I know that we don't want to do anything that's going to put another burden on community associations, and this, and this has been our, this issue.
Let me see, I, I think, to say it more succinctly, we didn't want to conflate the issues, so we just took the existing law, and we would be open to working with the council to, to address the underlying concerns about making sure community associations can participate.
Other questions or comments for the county executive on any of these three bills?
Is he?
Councilman, is he?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. County Executive. I'm going to shift gears to Bill 519, which is the Office of Ethics and Accountability, and I would, just a comment, would ask that you and your team consider funding this office, or creating the office, monitoring it so it'd be self-funded, and by that I mean that through its investigative activities, that it, it finds enough funding or enough issues that it pays for itself so that it's net neutral to the county's budget.
We'd be happy to work with you to craft some language of that effect.
Yeah, although you have to remember, I mean, I'm not sure what you're talking about, remember, under the Express Powers Act, we're very limited in terms of the size of fines that we can issue, if that's, you know.
No, so what I'm, what I'm getting at is, so for example, if it's, let's say, $200,000 a year, that through these investigative activities that we, that it yields, it funds cases that have cost the county in excess of that same amount, $200,000, and so that it yields savings to the county that, in, in fact, funds the office, is what I'm getting at. So it'd be monitored, it'd be stated, be stated in, in ethics and accountability office?
Well, I mean, so part, part of the, the, the issue with statting is, if we're going to make it independent, we wouldn't have any direct oversight or authority, but I think, I think the intent, I think your intent, Councilman, is, is spot on, I mean, that, we want this office to be. I mean, that, we want this office to be, I mean, hopefully not too active, but it's, if they're not active in terms of concerns that have been forwarded to them, there are other, other responsibilities contemplated about making county government be run more efficiently and, and, you know, addressing the other concerns. So I, I, I think that that should be their aim and their purpose. I don't know how you specifically craft that, but I think, I think the intention of what you're saying, we, we can get behind and try to figure out.
Right. And so for the sake of clarity, for county attorney, I didn't really mean like, I don't know if it's penalties, or if it's findings of inappropriate funding, use of funding that, that we're able to bring back to the county. So I'm not sure about the two, but I just want it to pay for itself, so that it's net neutral to the county's budget.
Councilman Brandl?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. One of the things, I think it's not only given me pause, but some other members that I've discussed, and back on to five nineteen. There's a comparison to Prince George's County, which established a similar office. And the cost for Prince George's County, according to the fiscal note, is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The fiscal note for Baltimore County under the proposal is, what, two fifty?
Two ten.
Two ten. So there's a, obviously, a large discrepancy. So I'm just kind of, I'm interested, maybe from the county attorney's office, what the, what the expected scope of the activity is. How many ethics complaints do we get? How, how much, you know, how much activity can we expect? Because, again, PG County, they have a staff of six, and this proposal is a staff of two. So what's the scope of work that this new agency would have to undertake?
Well, I mean, obviously, it's a little bit hard to predict. The ethics portion is only a small part of it. Last year, the Ethics Commission had, I think, eight requests for advisory opinions and only four, four complaints. But, you know, the executive has pointed out that this office is going to be a little bit, ethics is just going to be a small part of the office. I can't predict what number of investigations are going to happen, just because they're not happening now. So, but in terms of the ethics, the ethics part of it shouldn't be too big.
And are we concerned at all, because the details have not yet been worked out, on sort of the potential duplicative nature of, we have a county auditor's office, we have an ethics commission, and now we're going to establish a new agency? How does this all work together? And then, and are we clear on how this is going to work moving forward, if we're going to go through the time and expense of creating a whole new agency?
So I would, I would just reaffirm, Councilman, I mean, our, our intention is for this to be complimentary to the good work the auditors already do. Part of the way the bill is structured is to give this office access to records on both sides. And I know that frankly, that's been a challenge sometimes in past administrations, and I want to make sure it's not a problem in future administrations. You know, we're committed to trying to be transparent and, and making that available. But I know that we're only here, but for so long, and so part of it is putting the right structures in place where that, you know, this office has the opportunity to really fully investigate any concerns that are, that are raised, and, you know, would be really strictly focused on the core function of, of investigations, and care, in addition to carrying out the, the small number of ethics concerns or questions that come in currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Couch?
Yes. The Baltimore County school system has an Office of Internal Audit, and then the state of Maryland audits the county school system. So when I look at this bill, I envision a situation where this Office of Ethics and Accountability would have what I would call internal auditors, who are in the county, in the system itself, not necessarily looking for fraud or anything like that, but looking for, to see the operation, whether it's efficient, to make sure that all the checks and balances are in place, and that we're following the law. And then we have our Office of Audit, and that's like the double check. And so I, you know, I think, I support this personally, because I, I just, having been in the internal audit office, I can see the advantages to the system. We will save money, I can tell, I know that, absolutely.
Other questions or comments for the county executive on any of these bills? Councilman Jones?
Just one more comment. You know, I, from time to time, I'd get people from our community, who often talk with, with glow about how there is no indoor track facility here in our region, big enough to handle the regulation, track and field events. So they have to go to Montgomery County at their, whatever, the Wayne Curry Public something, education, whatever, sports complex they have there. And then I was thinking about how I was down there the other day at, at a Prince George's County, no, it was Montgomery County, I think, Equestrian Center, but, that's Prince George's? But I guess my point, what I was thinking about, the bill in terms of the public funding was modeled after Montgomery County. And Montgomery County, their budget is like, at least thirty-five to forty percent more than ours. They are ranked by Forbes Magazine as the top ten wealthiest counties in the nation. And I'm looking at our budget, and I'm, of three point two billion, and I'm looking at the needs that we have, and I'm just going to ask it, yes, one more time. You, you think that the public funding is more important than all these other things?
I think that they're all important, Councilman. And I'd, I'd say that Montgomery County, I mean, to, to your point, again, they, they have a bigger budget, but they also spend more on things like teacher salaries. They have the highest teacher salary in the state of Maryland. They also have the best school system, along with Howard County, they spend more money. Howard County is enacting this program, their budget is much smaller than ours. Baltimore City is enacting a, a program. So it's, again, I, I think that we can meet all of our priorities, and, and by putting it as a charter amendment for the, for the public to decide, they can tell us very clearly and directly, this is a priority that I want you to have be part of that mix, or this is not a priority. I don't want it to be part of the mix. If they vote it down, it won't be part of the mix.
Any other questions or comments for the county exec? All right. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming.
Oh, well, can I ask one more? So I guess had to ask us one more. Just one more. So in the bill, it says that if the financial condition is such, the county executive does not have to fund the program. So if the financial condition was such that we have today, where we had an eighty-one, let's move you into the future, and you had an eighty-one million dollar deficit, and you had three schools that you want to build, but you have no revenue to do it, would that financial situation that we're in today warrant funding such a program?
Well, fortunately, because of the great work of this council, we are down in Annapolis, and we're going to secure that money for school construction. We're getting the money for Kerwin, and we're, come this April and May, we're going to have a budget that's in balance, and we're going to find a way to close this gap. So it won't, won't be an issue, because we're going to be responsible, and we're going to meet these challenges head on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you thought you were going.
I were getting that Olympic pool for training of our Olympic athletes in Baltimore County. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, if you want to save some money, regulate the heat in this building, please.
All right. Everybody good? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming.
All right. We do have public speakers on Bill four dash nineteen, five dash nineteen, and three dash nineteen.
Is that that hot in here?
It's a little hot. But before we go to our public speakers on, and we'll go literally four dash nineteen first, five dash nineteen second, and three dash nineteen third, before we open up to our public speakers, is there any other comments, thoughts, questions, anything from the council? Everybody good? All right. So let's, let's move on to Bill four dash nineteen. That's the Baltimore County ethics laws. And if we could call up our first public speaker, Sheila Ruth, followed by Liz in Twistle, I think I, if I pronounced it right? And we have, what, up to three minutes per speaker? Yes, yeah, Bill four dash nineteen first.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are, are you going to have, if Sheila has signed up for three bills, will she testify on all three now? What are you going to do?
Well, I was thinking that, and given the three minutes per bill, if we just limit it like that, then it might shortchange possible testimony, so, but of course, if you want to condense it all, you're more than welcome, but otherwise, three minutes for each bill.
Or nine minutes. Then she could hit all three bills.
Yeah, let's, we'll go bill by bill, just to make it easy.
Thank you. I have three separate testimony, but I promise they're all very short. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the council. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Sheila Ruth, and I'm a resident of District One. I'm here in support of Bill four nineteen. This bill will expand the county officials required to complete ethics training, provide that county officials must wait a year after leaving employment before they can work as a lobbyist, and make lobbyist registrations available online. These important reforms will increase the county's ethical standards, help to prevent lobbyists from exerting undue influence, and provide greater transparency. I ask the council to please vote yes on Bill four dash nineteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll see you in a couple. And then Liz in Twistle, if I have that right?
I got this.
Come on up. And then Peter Richas, if you want to come on up on the, on the batter-up seat, close to Chris, who's over here. Chris, if you want to wave your hand? Yeah, Peter can sit up in the chamber, so. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Mr. Council. Just, I will be brief. I am a resident of the county also, and I support this bill. I think it offers significant opportunities to slow down the revolving door of elected executives and their appointees, frankly, and reducing their undue influence by powerful insiders on the decisions and decision-making and processes of our county government. I think we all know and have seen too much of that in the past, and I support this bill because it puts the same standards on that revolving door situation that we already have from the county council. And I also support the transparency piece of the bill, which requires all lobbyists in the executive, as it is with council, to be posted online. So I urge the council members to support Bill four nineteen.
Thank you. And then Peter Richas on Bill four dash nineteen. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, council president, council members. Let me add my voice to Sheila's and Liz's. I also support this bill, four nineteen, as a lobbying reform measure, and as explained by the county executive, that will put parity among you and the senior officials appointed by the executive. It will add to the citizens' feeling that people are accountable in county government, and that's what we expect and hope for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, let's go to Bill five dash nineteen, and, and we have, actually, you're coming up next, you'll be third, because that's exactly, Bill five dash nineteen, which is our next bill, is the Office of Ethics and Accountability. And our first, and I'll read the list of five names, just so you know what order, make it nice and easy. Sheila Ruth, Barbara Hopkins, Dwayne Davis, Liz in Twistle, Peter Richas. And so Sheila, and then Barbara Hopkins, if you want to just come on up on the batter-up seat, I guess, whatever name we'll call that. Good afternoon.
Hi.
On deck circle, there you go. Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Chair, and members of the county council. Thank you again. My name is Sheila Ruth, and I'm a resident of District One. This bill will create an independent office of ethics and accountability, which will have the authority to audit county records, conduct criminal, civil, or administrative investigations, and investigate possible fraud or abuse. An independent office like this is an important step in helping to hold county government accountable to the citizens, and increase citizen confidence in government. I ask the county council to please vote yes on Bill five dash nineteen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Barb Hopkins, followed by Dwayne Davis. And good afternoon, Ms. Hopkins.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Although I am the executive director of Neighbor Space, I'm sans uniform today, and a board member of the County League of Women Voters, I wear neither of those hats today. Today, my views are my own, and they are as follows. For far too long in our county, the activities of the executive branch were shrouded in an impenetrable veil of secrecy. Questions about process and substance deserve answers. Questions like how, for example, were the open space waiver fees calculated? And why, after a law has been in place, on the books for two years, did the administration fail to follow it? It's reprehensible that this sort of behavior ensued. It breeds contempt, distrust, and apathy among citizens and those of us on the front lines of working with and for them. It simply has no place in a democracy. Many of you tried to help answer these questions when they came up. I appreciate that very much. But sadly, you encountered similar barriers. I am hopeful, therefore, that the accountability bill will pass, and appreciate this opportunity to comment on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Appreciate it. Your next speaker, Dwayne Davis, followed by Liz in Twistle.
My name is Dwayne Davis. Everybody calls me Shorty. I'm a community activist, and I support this bill a hundred and fifty percent. We got to have accountability in Baltimore County, because Baltimore County is not accountable to anybody but themselves. They've created a machine that protects itself. Now, if you look in front of you, I got a storyboard there. I'm a prisoners' rights advocate, and it's about mass incarceration in your prison industry. So your first ethics case, if this gets passed, I want it to be about Scott Schellenberger. All right? I'm going to directly point the finger at the person I want investigated, Scott Schellenberger. And I want all the emails that Councilman Quirk has and Julian Joan has, and I'm going to submit this as evidence for the first case. This is a toilet. This toilet was the toilet I put in front of Towson, all right, back in two thousand and eleven. This is my producer, Rob Fix, all right? Rob Fix was a movie, he's making a movie, that toilet with nothing but a prop for a movie, and it was about race and racism in Baltimore County. Now, right here, there's a letter from Johnny Olesky asking the Department of Justice to investigate my case, because the city, the county council ain't did it yet. And I told you all a year ago, I was going to fight this and keep fighting it. Here is a letter that I'm offering from the David Camanucci from the U.S. District Courts, because y'all not doing y'all's job, and somebody got to be overseeing you. So I'm offering this as evidence for your first case, for Scott Schellenberger to be investigated on ethics and ethics violations. Y'all charged me with terrorism. I can't get a job. I'm homeless now. Not only did you charge me with terrorism, but you, you charged the state with money that they ain't getting back. You had helicopters here, you shut the city down, you closed down the courts. That cost a lot of people money. You feel me? And Scott Schellenberger should pay that bill, not me. I was innocent of all charges, so the bill should be on Scott Schellenberger. I can't come into this city council and holler fire, and ain't no fire. That's what Scott Schellenberger did in February of two thousand and eleven. He said bomb. He broke the law. He should be held accountable. And this ain't the first time that Scott Schellenberger did something to me. He also charged me with nine other felonies on a case in two thousand and eight. He also charged me with the murder and the death of Scott Greenberger. All right? So this is a personal issue that Scott Schellenberger took upon himself. You feel me? And you, as county council, and the law, should do something about it. He can't do that. It's against the law, not just the ethics, but against the law. You got a letter from me the other day at your county meeting, didn't you? Sir, Mr. Cor- Sir, Mr. Quirk. Very interesting letter, ain't it? I want you to enter that in an ethics evidence with this material that I'm giving you, because all of y'all know about it, and all of you need to do something about it. You feel me? That's my three minutes. Anything, any rebuttal from my council? Because last time I came here, you didn't have nothing to say either. Mike, check. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Katz?
The state's attorney's office is a state office.
Mm-hmm. So he's immune?
I would think that either the Legislative Audit Department in Annapolis...
Been doing that, been following... Councilman Quirk will tell you, I've exhausted all my remedies.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure that this council can legally audit.
No, but you can give me access to the grand jury, under Senate Bill 374. There's things that you can do, right? Ask your law department. Ask your lawyer, Mr. Fields. There's things that you can do to hold your county accountable. There's things that you can do to defend my rights.
What I'm saying is that you do, you can go to the state of Maryland...
I have.
And they have the real authority over the state's attorney's office.
I will do that. Could you write me a letter and tell them, and give me a letter of introduction for that?
I'm sorry, what?
Could you write me a letter and tell me who to go to, so I can take it to them and hand it to them and say that you said I can do this?
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker, Liz in Twistle, followed by Peter Richkis.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Bill 5-19, I urge you to support it. It would provide, by establishing an office of ethics and accountability, it would give, provide true independence, investigative teeth, including the power to refer claims of fraud, abuse, and other illegal acts for prosecution. Together with the other bills in the package, 3-19 and 4-19, it would put sunlight, which is democracy's best disinfectant, on the process, decisions, and expenditures of our elected officials, agencies, and boards, and I urge the council members to support Bill 5-19.
Thank you. And Peter Richkis, last speaker on Bill 5-19.
Thank you very much. If I didn't say so earlier, I'm Peter Richkis, and I live in Westhausen, and David Marx is my council representative. I too support this bill, 5-19, ethics oversight. I think the importance from the independence from the county executive and his administration, as well as from other elected officials, is important to the vitality of the transparency that we all say is valuable to the county. It will add and augment people's trust in what government does, and having worked in government, I think that's a critical element. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Bill 3-19, Citizens' Election Fund System. I'm gonna read the names, and then Sheila Ruth, Ron Lampert, Daniel Meyer, Liz in Twistle, Peter Richkis. So Sheila, then Ron, Ron on the on-deck circle. I think I got that right.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair and members of the county council. Just for the record, my name is Sheila Ruth. I'm here in support of Bill 3-19. I first would like to clear up some misunderstandings that have been going around. This bill does not appropriate any money, nor will it impact the next fiscal year. If passed by the council, all this bill will do is to put a question before the voters on the 2020 ballot. Do you want to create a citizens' election fund? If the voters choose to approve the fund, then the county executive and the county council will need to develop the details and enact legislation to define the rules. The new system will not go into effect until the 2026 election. This bill doesn't define any details, but clearly, the intent is to create a system similar to the one that Montgomery County used last year for the first time. In that system, public financing candidates cannot accept donations of more than $150 or from PACs, corporations, or political parties. A system like this can reduce the impact of developer and corporate donations and help elect candidates who engage more with constituents than large donors. Small donor systems like this also engage more people in elections and increase the diversity of donors and candidates. Studies have shown that small donors are more likely to volunteer for campaigns, and small donor programs can even increase voter turnout. And I also wanted to add that the question of, you know, priorities and funding is kind of a false question, because when you elect candidates who are more engaged with their constituents, they're more likely to fund their constituents' priorities and be more aware of their constituents' priorities. I also have some petitions that I'd like to present to the council, collected over the last six days. We have 132 total petitions, some from every district in the county, and so I guess I'll present those to the council when I leave. And I also have a couple of information sheets for the council, in case they're helpful. One is some of the details of Montgomery County's election, small donor public financing. The other is a great report from the Brennan Center, which is sort of a survey of literature about small donor public financing, and many of the benefits besides just addressing, you know, corporate donations. So thank you so much for your time and for considering this bill.
Councilwoman Jones?
Ms. Ruth, thank you so much for coming. We certainly appreciate you being here today and appreciate your comments. I'm gonna just ask you a question. You, I have to take exception to your comment about if somehow, you know, elected officials are more in tune to what the citizens want, then therefore, you're able to fund what they want. I'm here to tell you, as an elected official, I'm not sure if you were one or not, but it don't work that way. And there, I have a list of things that constituents in my community want. For example, Milford Mill High School have an excellent marching band. They would like band uniforms, but the school system don't fund band uniforms. So they have to somehow try to figure out how to embark on a plan to raise $130,000 to buy school uniforms, because that's not something we can afford, so we don't do it. I have a list that can go on and on and on. So what you guys failed to have demonstrated today, where is the public benefit? Where is the public good? Why should the public fund somebody's campaign?
Councilwoman Jones, I apologize if I offended you. I certainly, if I phrased that badly and made it seem like you don't pay attention to your constituents, because I certainly know that you do. But there are decisions that perhaps large numbers of constituents disagree with, such as giving $43 million to the Towson Road developer. That's something that I think a lot of citizens disagreed with, and I know that you did what you thought was best, and that's fine, but the fact is that a small donor public financing program allows candidates to, you don't have to sit in a room and do call time. You don't have to spend your time doing, you know, big-dollar fundraisers. You can instead spend that time knocking more doors, talking to more constituents. And again, this is no aspersion on any particular councilperson. I know that you all do important work and, you know, do a good job. It's just, it's another way, and it also is a way that whether or not there is a problem, it helps to address the perception, where the public, if the public perceives there's a problem, you know, that this kind of small donor public financing can address that perception.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a few comments as well. I feel the same way as Councilwoman Jones. I actually have a tracking system in my office, and to date, I've handled over 6,700 constituent issues. That's not just phone calls, that's issues that I've had to go through agencies and be responded to. I attend and am engaged in over 50 community associations and business associations. I have over 500 volunteers that help me on my campaign. I have knocked over 50,000 doors since I've been in office. I'm very engaged. I have high-dollar fundraisers as well as low-dollar fundraisers. And you did make a suggestion that I took pause to as well. I think everybody up here on this dais has worked very hard to be in the position that they're in, and that's your perception, and you're more than welcome to it, but I would also like to make a correction. The $43 million, 20, I want to say 26 million, somebody can correct me, but I'm pretty close, was from tax incentives from economic development. It wasn't taken from your school fund, it wasn't taken from your road fund, it wasn't taken from infrastructure. They were tax incentives that were already in place to do exactly what they did. And I'm sure that it's gonna be a well, a nice addition to Towson when it's done, instead of the hole in the ground that is one block by one block by one block by one block.
And if I could...
So we make hard decisions every day, and we are engaged, and I saw some comments on Facebook yesterday that I thought were unfair, because I think the general public is under the impression that people still won't raise a lot of money. You're, the public financing will just add to the money. I mean, you're still gonna, you're still gonna have fundraisers, you're still gonna raise money and get the additional funding as well. It's just not, you know, the way that I saw it on Facebook was, well, people that normally couldn't afford to run for office will run now. I've never used my own money to run for office. I fundraise on many levels, from $5 checks up. So, I mean, it takes a lot to run for office. You ran for office.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? It's hard.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a hard job to get here, and then we make really hard decisions once we get here.
Yes, ma'am. And I will say that, you know, you mentioned your constituent services, and I know that you have a reputation for being great with constituent services, and I did knock doors for you during the general election. And in terms of...
And I appreciate that.
Sorry, I forgot what I was gonna say. In terms of the Towson Row, I know that 23 million was tax incentives, but it was basically an advance on tax incentives, which put the risk on the county, where if the corporation is to go under before the, you know, the tax incentives pay out, then the county loses out on that. So again, it's just a question of priorities. I do want to apologize to you, because I'm not, on my behalf, but some of the comments I saw on Facebook were very inappropriate and wrong, and I'm sorry for that.
Thank you.
In terms of your fundraisers, again, the details would be up to you all, working presumably with the county executive's office, to define how the program will work. But in Montgomery County, you can't, if you're going to take money from the small donor program, you cannot accept donations of more than $150 per person, and all donations have to be individual donations from within the district. So you're not doing big-dollar fundraisers. Other people might be doing big-dollar fundraisers, but if you are participating in the...
On your behalf. Correct. They could be, they could, others could raise money for a PAC and spend that money on your behalf.
Sure. You mean a super PAC?
Well, yeah.
Because, because super PACs are...
Or a regular PAC.
Sure. Super PACs are independent expenditures, and under the Citizens United decision, there's nothing that you as councilmembers can do to stop that, because it's been ruled unconstitutional to try to put restrictions on independent expenditures, because they're considered free speech. So there's nothing really that can stop that. Public financing can't stop that, but it can help to address the gap.
Can I add one more thing? And I don't want to turn this to a debate with you, but I guess find it interesting. I'm so glad my colleague, Councilwoman Bevins, put me on point, because when you said the 43 million, I said I wasn't going to let that go by, but then I turned around and figured I'd give somebody a chance, but luckily, she brought me back to it. You know, it's interesting, you talk about that particular program, but the important part for me, when you think about the Towson Row, is number one, that money does not exist unless that project moves forward. That's monies that would not be around. There would be no tax break, no tax incentives, because nothing's happened, and nothing happened. We just get it. But at the end of the day, we hired a firm to crunch the numbers, and they use very conservative numbers, and they said that when this is done, this is going to be a windfall for Baltimore County, and you're going to collect taxes and funds, and all of this money is going to be used to fund our schools, to fund our roads, to fund our police, increase our tax base. That's what that program is going to do for us. This program will help a few people who are running for office, but I don't see any public benefit.
Well, again, as I said, the studies have shown, and these are in the Brennan Center report, which I'm going to leave here for you, that studies show that it's not just benefiting candidates, it benefits the public good, it increases voter turnout, it increases voter volunteering and engagement in elections, it increases the diversity of donors and candidates. More, under public financing system, more women get elected for office, and more minorities get elected for office, because, you know, those candidates often don't have access, or not always have access, to the donor networks that, you know, traditional candidates have. And so it can help increase the diversity. So just in many, many ways, it can help improve the representation of, you know, elected officials and candidates, and that's the public benefit.
Thank you. All righty.
Well, I would just, you know, and look, I'm sympathetic to this idea, I've said that before, but the Brennan Center, to be fair, has a very liberal, progressive bent. I would like to see if a conservative organization has looked at these to provide another viewpoint. I'm just gonna throw that out there.
There is.
Huh? Is there? I mean, has the Heritage Foundation looked at this? Has a group of a different ideological bent looked at this? I'm just curious.
It's a good question.
It's a good question.
Mr. Chairman? Any other, Councilman Katz?
Yeah, very quickly, when I ran in the Republican primary in 2014, it was very daunting when I saw my opponent had a quarter of a million dollars...
Wow.
...in the bank. And, I mean, I was fortunate enough, I mean, I had been in elected office, so people knew me, but I can imagine if I were gonna run for county council in 2014, never held office or anything, maybe active in my community association, to see that the person I'm gonna run against in the primary is gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars. I mean, it's daunting. So, you know, I think what this is geared to is getting people to give the small contributions, which will be matched. And of course, the other thing with this, there's a limit. If you take public financing, there's a limit as to how much you can spend. So I just think it's advantageous to do this. I mean, I've never supported public financing of elections, ever.
There's no limit on what you can spend.
But I do, yes, yes, there is. Public financing, public financing.
You can continue to raise whatever you want.
No, most of them put limits on it.
There's a limit on what they give you as a match.
No, what they, which you can spend.
But you can continue to raise money.
Which you can spend, there's a limit.
You can spend it, spend whatever you raise.
I don't, well, it all depends on how it's set up, but they, most of them have limits, because the Supreme Court said you couldn't limit spending in a campaign unless you had public financing. So that's, the Supreme Court said that, I guess, about 20 years ago. But I understand what you're talking about, and despite the fact that I've always opposed this, I'm gonna support this now.
Thank you.
Because I think that it'll be healthy for Baltimore County.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I would just say, Sheila, that we have to be really careful with language, because language has power.
Yes, sir.
And so if somebody disagrees with you on an issue, like, for example, Towson Row, that doesn't mean that they're corrupt or unethical, they might just see something completely different. I mean, I very proudly voted for Towson Row, and I think if we didn't do that, we'd still have a big hole in Towson for years and years to come, and instead, I think we're gonna have a huge economic engine and a wonderful new addition to Towson, but I don't think that makes me corrupt or unethical.
And I did not say that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, I would just be careful on the implications on the language. You know, when we're talking about these things, I mean, the primary, I had people come up to me and say, "You're unethical and you're corrupt." I'm like, "I don't even know you." "Oh, because I took money from business." "Oh, okay." I just, I just think we have to be real careful with the language, because I think a lot of us want the same thing in the final analysis, but I also think language can be insightful, and I think... But I also think language can be insightful, and I think that it can definitely do harm if it's couched in the wrong way. So, I'll leave it at that. Our next speaker is Ron Lambert, followed by Daniel Meyer.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila.
My name's Ron Lambert, and I thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a resident of Baltimore County, and I'm here to support Bill three-nine-teen. Here's my story. A few months ago, I and my neighbors attended a community input meeting. We learned that a property owner in our residential area was planning to build an assisted living facility in our neighborhood. None of my neighbors was in favor of this. A representative of the owner at the meeting stated that the specific property, the specific property zoning was changed years ago, and mentioned the name of a former councilman who was influential in that decision. None of my neighbors knew anything about this zoning change. We all came away from this experience feeling frustrated, believing that the political decision, that political decisions are rigged in favor of large campaign donors. My sense is that Baltimore County government's reputation has suffered in recent years. All three bills would help restore the public's trust in government. In particular, Bill three-nine would give, nine, three-nineteen would give small donors an opportunity to feel empowered. The benefit would be a healthier political climate, restoring faith that the political system is fair. I believe that the residents of Baltimore County should have the right to vote on whether or not to implement the election fund system. I hope you will give them a chance to do this in 2020 by voting for this bill. Then citizens can decide whether it's worth the investment. Otherwise, I have to wonder, were my neighbors right? Is the system rigged? Please show us that it isn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Cott.
Which assisted living, you're in my district, right?
Yes.
Which, where is it?
This is Timonium Terrace.
Gotcha, I know. Okay. I just thought maybe it was one I hadn't heard of.
Uh, no.
Alrighty. Thank you, thank you so much. Next speaker, Daniel Meyer, followed by Liz Entwistle.
Right. My name's Dan Meyer, I'm a resident of District Four, and I wanted to, I'm glad you gave me the opportunity to talk about public financing. I spent a lot of time watching and being involved in all of the Montgomery County races in 2018, and I came away thinking a couple things. First off, public financing is absolutely not a giveaway of public money, and it's not a threat to incumbents. And let me explain why I say that. So first, the public financing system in Montgomery County requires that individual, that people agree to only take money from individuals and only take up to a hundred and fifty dollars per cycle. They have, in order to get any money, you have to first qualify, which means you have to receive a certain number of donations from actual county residents that total a certain amount. And that was a high bar. I think about two-thirds of the people who opted for public financing did not qualify, did not get a dime of public money, just didn't go anywhere, and their, their races were basically over. But, at the end of the day, what it means is that the candidates have to go out and engage very hard with constituents and ask people for, you know, "Can you give me twenty dollars? Can you give me fifty dollars? Can you give me ten dollars? Can you give me something?" And it worked. Out of the contested races, six out of seven of them went to people who took public financing. No incumbents lost in a reelection race. In fact, none of them were really even challenged. There was only one person who challenged an incumbent in a serious way, and that person didn't take public financing. I just look at, at what happened, and the people who were taking public financing bragged about it. They said, "I'm taking public financing, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna be, I only want small donations." And I think that that was very liberating to most of these people. I think they, most of these people want to continue in the public financing system. And, you know, Montgomery County has had the same financial challenges that Baltimore County has had. They are, have a huge deficit right now, and they need to rearrange their money, but I haven't heard any talk about taking out of the public financing. Now, there have been some issues, but they're, they're working on them. But the other thing is, you know, I don't want to accuse anybody of being corrupt, but there's a perception of this. If you look at what happened with Jim Broshin versus Vicki Almond, that race turned out to be all about Jim Broshin accusing Vicki of being corrupt and taking money from land developers and whatnot. And I'm not gonna say it made any difference whatsoever, but it certainly poisons people's attitudes towards county government, and it's not necessary, there are other ways to do it.
Alrighty.
I guess make a comment, it's not, you don't have to answer, you can-
I'm happy to answer.
You're done. I mean, it's not for you to answer. I was, you bought up the race with the county executive.
Correct.
And he has something in common with myself, Izzy Petoka, and a few others.
He being?
He, county executive.
Oshasko.
Johnny Oshasko.
Okay.
He was outspent by his opponents. But at the end of the day, the citizens have a choice.
Sure.
And the citizens choose the person they think is the best going to represent them. And I think it's insulting to think that it's all about money, and that somehow, if we just give candidates money, then everything is going to be better. Now, and you, and you said that it's, we don't give money to, Montgomery County didn't give money to candidates. That's exactly what they did.
May I respond?
Sure.
Okay. So, you're correct, Montgomery County gave money to candidates, they gave money to candidates in a matching format, the, the-
Notwithstanding the criteria, whether you do cod wheels, whether you do backflips, at the end of the day, candidates receive public funds.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's why it's called public financing.
That taxpayers pay, most cases, to fund the government, to provide essential services.
So, may I also address one other thing about that? You said, you know, you beat candidates who outspent you. I agree, you absolutely can do that, but there is a certain bar you need to reach in any election. You need to be able to raise enough money to get your message out. Once you get your message out, getting more money is gravy and it can help, but it's not necessarily a determining factor. But if you can't raise enough money to reach the voters that you need to reach, that could be disqualifying, that could be the end of the road right there. If you look at, you know, the Eighth Congressional District in 2016, Jamie Raskin raised two million dollars against David Trone, who spent thirteen and a half million dollars of his own money, and he won. But then, what happened the next time? David Trone spent another thirteen million against people who were not able to raise nearly as much money, and he won. So, if you can't, you're correct, that it's not-
So, that doesn't make a correlation.
Well, my point is, it's not all about how much money you can raise, but if you can't raise a certain amount, if you can't get above a certain threshold that you can actually communicate with the voters, that's a problem.
Well, let me guess, add one more thing, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. One of the things that, I was told today that today was the thirtieth anniversary of the internet. I was told that by my colleague.
That's true.
And, and I was thinking to myself, well, he asked, "Well, how do they know?" I said, "Well, probably because Al Gore told them." But, but the point I'm making is, the point I want to say is this, we live in a different world, and every day, that world is constantly evolving. No longer do you, if you have an issue or gripe or a campaign, no longer do you have to go to a TV network. No longer do you have to count on the local newspaper. You have it all in the, in the palm of your hand with your phone. You can put a post on Facebook, ads are relatively cheap, and you can reach thousands of voters, thousands of voters. Or whatever your message or cause is, it can go viral if there are people who are interested in what you're saying. And overnight, it can go viral, thousands, if not, you know, close to a million people can watch it. People watching all sorts of stuff. So, to somehow imply that the only way to get your message out is with money is, that's not true, and it's becoming less true more and more every day.
Councilman Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just for the sake of clarity, when Councilman Jones was referencing the race I was in, he was pointing, he was making the point that my opponent in the primary raised more money than I did. He wasn't referencing any play, pay, pay to play.
Right. We got that.
That was, that was the point, that was the point behind all of us.
Alrighty.
And I think when you said, in your first race as well, you did not raise as much as your opponent.
Right.
Just to be clear.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yep.
Alright, our next speaker, Liz Entwistle, followed by Peter Ryszkas.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, councilmembers, and again, for the record, I'm Liz Entwistle, and I failed to mention earlier that I am a resident of District Three, Councilman conscious district. I would urge this, the councilmembers, to support three-nineteen. I, you know, together with the other two bills that are under your consideration today, to me, they are the sine qua non, as we lawyers say, the, without which you cannot have good government. They're basic foundational building blocks to having transparent, open, honest government. And I, I think that, you know, letting sunshine, you know, rain over the process from candidates to officeholders to leaving office and becoming or not becoming a lobbyist, you know, it, why not? Put sunshine on it. What are we afraid of? This bill in particular, I, you know, again, as Sheila Ruth said earlier, all it is doing is allowing the, the voters of the county to decide whether this is an appropriate way to allocate public funds. That's all we're doing, all this council is considering here today. It, it would allow, you know, as has been mentioned earlier, it would level the playing field for new entrants into candidates' races. It would allow candidates to run without having to raise a war chest, and if elected, without being beholden to developers and other large contributors. It would free the elected officials to make decisions in the public interest without fear or favor and without undue influence from powerful interests which have, for too long, held our county government in their thrall, or at least there is a public perception that that is what has been happening in Baltimore County. So, I guess my closing comment would be, let's follow the good example, good government, best practices example that our neighbors have embarked upon in Montgomery County and Howard County and Baltimore City for this good government measure, and I urge each of you to support Bill three-nineteen.
Thank you, Liz. And a quick question for you is, I hear what you're saying, and conceptually, I can support this. I mean, I think if we frame a question on a referendum to the public, do you support public financing on a voluntary basis? I think it'd be overwhelming support, ninety-five percent plus. I think if you ask the question, do you support public financing on a mandatory basis with tax, you know, maybe income taxes or property taxes used, I honestly don't know what the answer would be on that question. So, to me, just even understanding the concept of what we're trying to do, like, is important to me. I prefer not to vote on just concept, I prefer to vote on something a little more tangible that we know we're sending on to referendums. So, to me, you get the answer that you're looking for, depending on the question that you ask, and that's, you know, kind of more of a philosophical tenet. And so, that's, that's my more, more conceptual question, is really trying to understand, really, what question are we really asking on the referendum?
Yeah, that's a really good question because, you know, we just went through this, we've done a lot to modernize the charter. We really have. We've done, I think, more than any other council to structurally improve the county charter. But the question is, Mr. Field, we pass the legislation, and then your office actually does the wording, right?
Well, okay, so, just first of all, the way the bill is structured is, this will be funded, you know, in the budget. So, right now, the bill, the bill is written as not, I mean, I don't know the distinction between voluntary and mandatory, but this bill assumes that it will be funded within the budget. So, that's, I mean, that's already right there in the bill.
But could we vote on the language, the specific language you have to put on the ballot?
Well, I tend, I write the language typically, and I figured that, really, I had copied this bill from, I think it was the Howard, definitely the Howard County version of the bill, so I assumed that if you passed this, what I was gonna go do frankly is look at the question that they put on the ballot that Howard County did, and, you know, just sort of tweak it that way. I always send these questions off to the secretary to see how he feels about it for pretty much everything that I do, for everything that I do when I do that, so. But I figured that because the language for this charter amendment had been taken from the Howard County charter, with some tweaks because there's some differences in the way our charter works, that I was gonna go back and sort of look at whatever language Howard County put on the ballot back in two thousand whatever it was, and probably use something like that. But just to be clear, this bill, right now, is currently worded, provides that it will be funded by the, you know, within the budget.
And if it was, if we amended it and changed to voluntary, we can never guarantee the four-point-one million potential cost, I guess, is-
Right, I mean, it would be a totally different program. And that, you know, obviously, that's, that's for the council to decide how he wants to do it, but currently, it's funded within the budget.
But I guess my question is, could we have a paragraph that would actually go on the ballot? Could you provide that to us? What, what do you think the paragraph would look like?
Oh, I mean, I guess I can-
Before the vote. Before the vote. I mean, I think that would be really helpful, is to see that paragraph.
So, I mean, I could-
Let's ask Mr. Field something.
Would you mind doing that?
No, I mean, I, I mean, I could, yeah, I mean-
Okay.
I wasn't planning on writing it for two years, but I could write it now.
Would that be fine with everyone, to get that? Kathy, would you like that?
Well, let me, let me ask you a question, Mr. Field. Do you know, do you know what percentage of ballot initiatives, things on the ballot passes?
Virtually all of them.
Virtually all of them?
Yeah.
So, but unless there's some concerted effort, unless there's some campaign against something, where people are spending money and time and effort and whatever to, to, to stop something, you put it on that ballot, people walk in making tough decisions on their candidates and everything else, and then when they get down to those ballot initiatives and they fund this, fund that, fund that, fund that, it's almost assured of passing. So, so, to me, it's, it's, it's a false premise to say, "Well, let's put it on a ballot, let the citizens decide," because we know that just about everything that goes on that ballot is going to be passed, unless somebody then turns around and have to make an effort, a campaign, a county-wide campaign, to convince people not to do something.
Right.
Well, I mean, okay, so it is true that virtually all of them pass, but if you look at the numbers, they'll differ. Somebody's reading these things because when we do, for example, the bond things, every two years I put up, you know, we, you guys passed nine bond bills, and we put them up on the ballot, and they don't all pass by the same numbers, so, I mean, I do have-
They get lower as you go down.
Pardon?
Do they get lower as you go down? The percentages?
I don't know, it's a good question. I mean, I haven't studied it, but I'm just saying, every now, when I look at it, I, you know, and I don't know what the reason, so it suggests to me that someone actually is reading these things.
Yeah.
So, I mean, actually gives me a little bit of comfort that they don't pass by uniform numbers because it tells me that someone's paying enough attention, that, you know, they're, they're fine with this bond issuance, but they're not fine with that one. And so, I mean, I do think that we should, you know, and I think the same thing was true, Mr. Marks, of the, you know, the, where we do five bills, I guess, for the charter amendments, and I think that, I also don't think that they pass by uniform numbers. So, it suggests to me that someone is paying attention and reading these things, and so I do think that, while it is true that in the end, they tend to pass-
The prohibition and second-
Like question A with the decennials.
The prohibition on secondary employment failed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, right, no, you found that it failed.
And five oh nine, the five oh nine vote, I think that was-
That also failed.
That also failed.
Yeah, so they don't, I mean, that's why I said virtually all. You remember that, we, there were two bills for that one, and it, because, and it failed.
It failed.
And that's, and we didn't bring it up in the Charter Review Commission because of what had happened before.
Yep, yep.
So, some of these things fail. So, yeah, I mean, I do get some comfort that people are reading them because of the way the votes turn out, so I wouldn't necessarily guarantee that if you put this up, it's gonna pass. If there's a concerted effort by, you know, people to not have it pass, there's a fair chance that it will.
Well, I could, I could, with the chair, I apologize. I could tell you, having studied a lot of election results, I do believe people are reading them, but I also know that sometimes people will vote for governor and they won't for, for county council, they'll vote for county executive and they won't vote for governor or county council. In other words, you'll have undervotes on almost every, every, you'll have undervotes on just about everything, where for some reason, some reason, some people will not[1781.52] on just about everything, where for some reason, some reason, some people will not vote for something. And I didn't even bother taking, like, I won my election on a general election, the second place person was Chuck E. Cheese. That's a joke. The right ends, right?
Cheese.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Councilman Petoka?
Just one point to Councilwoman Bevan's question about bond issues. So, the closer to core government, the better the bond issues perform.
Okay.
And as you pull away from core government functions, moving towards arts, typically, they perform worse on the ballot.
Is that how it works? Okay, thank you.
Good point.
All right, I know we have one more speaker. The closer for today is Peter Richkis. Actually, Peter, it looks like you were the last speaker for each of them. And good afternoon, thank you for your, all of you for your patience being a couple minutes before.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the council for the opportunity for public participation. As you can tell, since I signed up for all three, I do believe strongly that County Executive Oshaski's plan to improve the appearance and transparency and functionality of government are things to applaud. And I do support 3-19, and think that Baltimore County is in a good position to move forward with this. One, Baltimore County will not be on the bleeding edge of public financing. Others have done it successfully, they've done it in different ways. This proposal, we'll take it to the voters, and I believe that the voters do read, I read, all of the minutia of the charter changes, and I know many do as well, and leave it to them. Then it would come back to you and the county executive to deliberate on workable ways that you think can move the county forward on this particular matter. So, thank you again for your attention, and I urge you to support 3-19 as well as 4-19 and 5-19.
Wonderful, thank you, Peter. Any other members have anything before we wrap up for the day?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Katsch.
Quickly, we have two representatives from the Spring Lake community who are here in support of these bills, but I have a quick question. Does your community association spend over $100 a year? I mean, you, you know, you're always asking me to, you know, you're always contacting, having your neighbors contact me, which is fine, so you do lobby. Do you spend over $100? Well, on, on anything that would be of the lobbying nature, for instance, you were to, you, I know you're, but you don't, they're not paper. Aren't they on the, they're...
But I would like to point out, the $100 isn't new. It's always been in the law.
You don't wanna answer the questions? Okay. So, so, okay, so we can talk...
Couple sun reporters.
Mr. Chair, can I, can I?
Councilman Jones.
Real, real quickly, although I have stated my position, and I certainly disagree with some of the people who came in and spoke, but let me guess, thank you for coming, we certainly appreciate your participation, it's what makes governments work, and I really are glad that you're here to voice your opinion. Thank you very much for coming.
And anybody else? Any other? Nah, I agree, Councilman Jones kinda took my final statement.
I think I was, go ahead.
That was, no, that's exactly on the mark, is, you know, I think we can all agree, and we can all disagree, we can do it respectfully, we can do it professionally without impugning anybody's character or integrity. Sometimes, we just won't agree. But I think the citizen participation, and I think the county executive with his move, the town halls, for example, were great, and we had a wonderful turnout, it was better than expected, which I appreciated, and a lot of good people coming out, and that's democracy in action, citizen input and engagement, so that is something that definitely is very welcome. So, thank you all for coming, and please have a safe drive home.
No, no, I, I, actually, the answer to his question was, "We could." He didn't say, "We did." He said, "We could." What he meant by that is, if we had to, we could. Yeah, yeah, okay. That's all right, that's all right.